Okay, so this is our April 6, 2021 work session in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Adequate notice has been given to all members of the governing body, the local source, and the Westfield leader, the two newspapers designated to receive such notice. This notice is also posted on the Borough Hall Bulletin Board. Let the record reflect that all members of council, except for Bob Messler, are present. We also have Glenn Mortimer, the administrator, Kim Moria, our senior coordinator, John Post, our attorney, Jill Good, our CFO, and Martha Lopez, and I do see some guests. So at this time, we want to do a salute to the flag, and I don't see Frank as usually our salute to the flag person. So can somebody get us a flag? Okay, Glenn's got us a flag. Okay, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the United States, America, and to the Republic of Japan. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so let's start our discussion. The first thing is a request to use the Borough logo for the eighth grade fundraiser.
What's that roll call?
It just did it.
Okay.
It's only in the formal sessions that Martha has to do the wall call.
Hey, Paul?
Yeah?
There's background noise. Maybe we could ask everybody to mute when you're talking, so you know.
Who's the culprit?
I'm not sure. Maybe if everybody, if all our guests put themselves on mute, it might make it better.
Thanks for that. Okay, so this request to use the logo, what's that about? Glenn, you gonna tell us?
Yes, Katia Salerno contacted me in regards to a fundraiser for the eighth grade class. They'd like to use the Borough logo, which, as you know, is trademarked, and permission must be granted by the mayor and council to use the logo. If you have any questions, Katia and her colleagues, I'm sure would be happy to answer them.
What are they gonna use it for?
Hi, so Trevon Sickinoffy. We are having, you know, eighth grade activities, the dance, the pool party, and the breakfast. And because we weren't allowed due to the COVID restrictions to have fundraising at the school like normal, we had to actually think outside the box. So on behalf of the eighth grade committee, we would like to get your permission to use it as the fundraiser, or one of the fundraisers to benefit the class of 2021. You know, growing up in town, I remember seeing the flags on the tree posts in the houses. I even remember the sweatshirts we used to have, Rome, Paris, Mountainside. And I just think that it would be a great, you know, our committee, Katia, actually brought it up. But I think it would be a great thing to bring back to Mountainside, to show Mountainside pride. And a lot of people had showed interest. So Katia had reached out to Mr. Mortimer and asked if we could have their permission. And I think it'd be a great thing for the eighth grade, you know, to benefit the eighth grade, and then also to benefit, you know, our town, because our logo, our symbol, it represents so much pride.
So is it just for a flag, though, Yvonne?
It's a garden flag, yes.
Garden flag, okay. Is that similar to the ones, I think it might have been, somebody sold them a few years ago?
I remember in 19, again, when we moved here, it was 88, 89, and everybody in town had them.
Just recently, I think, I think it might have been NYPD, maybe, somebody was selling them. But I don't know, I don't have a problem with it. I don't know about the rest of council.
I don't have a problem at all. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
It's great.
It's a great idea.
Okay, so that sounds like it's unanimous.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Good luck, ladies.
Good luck.
You.
Good luck with the fundraiser.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so the next item is the pool party waiver request from the Mountainside PTO.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I could request, we do have another citizen making a request. If we could move that one to the up, so that they don't have to stay if they choose not to?
Oh, no, we were gonna torture them and make them stay for the whole meeting.
All righty.
That's only for Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts and those? No, that's fine. I'm assuming this is the request for the outdoor sale on Borough property. Is that item 13?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll hear from our resident about that, and then we can figure out what we want to do.
Sure. My name is Caroline Antonelli. I've been in town for about six years. And just to give you a little bit of background, my daughter and I started a small online boutique during COVID, because she graduated from college, came home, she was offered a job, and of course, the job fell through due to COVID. So we started our business, and over the past nine months, we've been approached by several other people that are in our situation with small businesses, trying to drum up business from the New York area in Staten Island. And what they were doing was hosting a bunch of what they considered a sidewalk sale, a lot less, on a lesser scale of a street fair, but bigger than a garage sale. And they would invite a couple of vendors, anywhere from 15 to 25 vendors. They would choose outdoor, either streetsides, or municipal parking lots, or parks, where they would set up, each vendor would set up their own display of their merchandise. And they were only having it on weather-permitted days, where the weather was nice, people were COVID-friendly, adhering to all the COVID restrictions and requirements. And it really drummed up a lot of business. And so my daughter and I came to thinking, why can't we have something like that in Mountainside, where we could, you know, entice the other merchants of our town to display their wares, people that have their own little businesses? Because, you know, we're kind of in shutdown mode, business has slowed tremendously. And it would be good, we thought, for the town, as well as, you know, our own business, getting out there in a different and innovative way to gain client help. So I had called Glenn, and he suggested perhaps it would be possible in the commuter parking lot. I just wanted to see if we needed a permit, if it's even possible for Mountainside to consider it. That's it.
Anybody have any questions? The first question is, how many vendors do you anticipate, and will there be a limit?
So I think there would be anywhere from 15 to 25. I think we would have to see how many merchants within Mountainside would respond to it, would be interested in it. I do have vendors personally that I know that would travel actually from New York, from other areas, in, from Sayerville, New Jersey, and stuff like that, to come up and display. We're not looking for, we're not looking to attract that many people. I don't think it should turn into like a street fair. I will say this, in the ones that we've hosted so far, you know, maybe sporadically, over a four-hour period of time, there's been, you know, 200 spread out over four hours, you know? But it did, it was great, great for the towns that we had it in, in New York, and it was great for the vendors that came. So I would say anywhere from 15 to 25. Limit it and keep it small.
And when do you think you would want to host this?
So I would say sometime either the end of spring, beginning of summer. I don't think it should be so, excuse me, so warm outside. But I think, you know, it's gotta be when the weather is nice, and we've got to, we would have to have a rain date, because I don't think if we had it when there was inclement weather, I don't think anybody would show up. You know, not everybody has tents. A lot of people aren't gonna go outside. I think we'd want to keep it so that it could be outside because of COVID, because we all wore masks, we all had hand sanitizer, no one, you know, took their masks off when they were dealing with vendors. You know, it was very, very safe and very successful, and there were no, we hadn't had any repercussions over the past nine months.
Who would determine what vendors are gonna be permitted to participate?
I think I would have to, you know, put it out, advertise it somehow, and, you know, I don't think we can limit it to anybody. I think it's got to be, whether it's a restaurant, whether it's a retail operation, whether it's a, you know, someone who owns a professional practice. I think we'd have to open up to anyone, and on a first-come, first-served basis.
You say "we," who do you mean?
I don't know. It could be me, or whomever I have to go through in order to, you know, I would reach out, either via email or door-to-door, I don't know. I think this is a first time, right? I don't, I don't know of any other event that Mountainside has hosted unless, you know, that happened prior to the six years that I've been here. I don't, but that's what I would do. That's what I would suggest.
Have you attended events like this in other communities?
I have, yeah. And it was basically via email. Most of the advertising was done through Instagram, where, you know, people, they post it. I'm also part of that Nextdoor, where it just seems to be a lot of people from Mountainside are on there. There's Mountainside Matters. We could post it in there and see anybody that's interested could contact me, or, you know, do it that way. It's mostly through social media. That seems to be a very effective method.
I think that certainly the commuter parking lot, I don't believe you can fit more than 15. Matt, maybe you can chime in on what you think. 25 sounds like a lot to put in the commuter parking lot. Well, Matt, what do you think about that?
It really depends on how many tables each person has. I mean, the most I would think you'd be able to do is maybe three rows, one on either side, and then one down the middle. It would all depend on how many tables these people are gonna have each.
In the past, we've found each vendor is limited to one table.
All right, well, and then maybe it is possible with one table. But I think 25 should be the max, especially because of parking.
Is the library currently open on Saturdays or no?
Yes.
It is?
Yes. So I believe till, I think, one.
Is that fully opened, Donna?
We're fully opening. The announcement hasn't gone out. It's supposed to go out, it's supposed to open Monday. The 12th is when the library is supposed to open up again.
Hi, Caroline. Oh, sorry, Paul.
I guess we'd want to start it then, have it start after 1:00. Otherwise, you're gonna conflict with the patrons of the library. So I think we'd probably have to limit it and not have it start till 1:00.
Would Sunday be better?
I don't think the library's gonna be open on Sunday, correct, Donna?
Correct. No, Sunday wouldn't be a problem at all. You know, Sunday would probably be better, because you could have the whole day, you know, from the morning.
Right.
You said you've attended some of these events. What type of vendors were at these events?
Anything from, myself is clothing, but anything from, you know, treats and edible goods, to candles, to innovative things, like I think we bought cotton candy glitter puffs for Easter, where, you know, you put it in your champagne glass and glitter pops out. Just, you know, a lot of crafts from people that are very, very creative, come up with different ideas, and just don't know how to, you know, get the word out about their products, so.
So this, the only question I have is, what if someone wants to sell things that might be, you know, offensive to other individuals, you know?
Well, I think if I advertise, let's say through social media, let's say my daughter and I put something out there on Instagram and get a response from, you know, local individuals around here and merchants and stuff. I think, you know, one of the questions is gonna be, so what is your merchandise? And what do you have for sale? What are you looking to advertise, right? And we could run that list by you, you know, the town council, whatever need be, in order to ensure that, you know, it is appropriate. And, you know, what they've done in the past is, they only chose a certain number of, for instance, you know, my daughter and I, there was only one vendor of, you know, young trendy clothing. They didn't want a lot of competition. So it was a, you know, just a plethora of ideas and merchandise.
And then the other question I had is, what about if some of the items are competing with businesses that rent in Mountainside? You said there could be food, and so let's say, what's our thoughts on that?
So I think, I think we would have to, I mean, let's say, if we were to reach out, and let's say, you know, just for example, Bovella's as well as Public House. We would just have to make sure that they're not offering the same.
No, I'm not concerned about that, but let's see if somebody wants to compete with Bovella's or Public House, but it's located in another town.
Well, again, I think we'd have to, we're limiting the list to 25, right? So whoever comes forth and shows an interest, I think we'd have to just make sure that what they are displaying and what they are selling is not competing with whatever else is on the list, or whomever else is on the list, right?
Or maybe she goes out to the businesses in Mountainside first, offer them the first opportunity to participate, and if they choose not to participate, then that would be okay too.
Yeah.
Maybe. But I have one more question, Caroline. What is the cost, if someone is a vendor, what is the cost to get the table, if there is one? And then you said something about, there's not actually tents, it's just cables, correct?
Yes, yes.
But what is the cost to participate?
So in the past, out of the six or seven that I've done, I've only paid a fee of $20 twice. And that $20 at the time was to purchase water and, like, snacks, like pretzels for the vendors themselves, because they're gonna be sitting there for four hours. But we were thinking not to charge anything, and just telling the vendors, listen, spend that $20 on advertising to get people to us, because the last thing we want is 25 vendors sitting there in an empty parking lot for four hours, right? So I also, you know, I didn't know if there was going to be a permit involved. So if that were the case, and we had to pay a fee, then I would have to, I would think, charge each vendor a certain amount of money to cover the permit. I didn't know if that was required or not. One of the other reasons I'm here.
Right. And I guess, John Post, I mean, is there anything liability-wise? You would just have to go to insurance company for hold harmless?
Yes, we would. Yeah, that's a good question, and we would.
And is that a fee for that, or no?
Not, one, not only the permit that's required, two, with respect to the hold harmless agreement. I mean, that's one of the, why I was asking before, who would sort of be in charge? Was the Borough has to be dealing with somebody if it's making a formal arrangement to fight people onto its property. And I guess, Caroline, you would be, you would be the person?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, yeah.
You a private, are you a company? Do you have a company, or?
I have, yes. I have a registered company with the state of New Jersey. I do.
Well, I assume that you would then be the sponsor of the event?
Yeah.
Your company would be?
Yeah.
Your company would have to then satisfy the requirements that are associated with entering into a contract with the Borough.
John, not to interrupt, but we're still getting the background noise. So someone, whoever is, needs to mute, because we're still getting a lot of background noise. So I don't know who it is, but we need to.
I know where it's, sorry, sorry to interrupt. I know where it's coming from. Sorry, Caroline, when you're not speaking, just put it on, just mute yourself. Perfect. Thank you.
I assume, Caroline, that you have, your company has insurance, and would otherwise be able to make a contract with the Borough, where you would be indemnifying the Borough against any claims the Borough might have. Let's, just say, for example, somebody fell down in the parking lot. It's Borough property, so they would certainly sue the Borough. And you have, does your company have insurance that would enable it to indemnify the Borough against that kind of a claim?
So my company is, no, does not have insurance for that. It does not.
There might be a way for you to get, like, I've seen where you could buy a one-day policy, a liability policy for these types of events. So I would think that we would require some type of insurance. And Glenn, you're gonna check and see if there's a permit required, and there may be some requirements in order to obtain the permit, and that may very well be one of them.
Can I just say something, Paul? I think that if it involves food, the serving of any kind of food or packaged goods, it probably needs board of health inspection, so that's something that has to be looked into as well.
Even if they're wrapped foods?
Yes. It depends what it is.
Okay.
So I think when it comes to food, I think, I don't know whether I would offer it, well, I don't know. I mean, Public House or Bovella's, right? I don't, I don't, we can't eliminate them.
I don't think they're likely to come to something like this in town, I don't think.
Okay.
I do see on your flyer, though, white wine and mimosas. I don't think we can allow that.
No, I don't think so.
I thought I would like it, but I don't think we could permit that. So why don't you, Caroline, circle back with Glenn and see what the requirements are? I think as long as the Borough is protected, and we would have the right to at least review the vendors that you have. I also think if there, we would like to see preference going to any Mountainside-based companies that would like to participate. I don't want to exclude a Mountainside company, because we get to the limit over some other companies. So I think, unless anybody else has any other questions or comments, I think the best thing for you to do is to get back with Glenn Mortimer and see what the permitting requirements might be in conjunction with any board of health requirements, depending on what kind of food you're gonna be serving, because you may just want to exclude any kind of food, so you would avoid having to go through the board of health.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds great. And also, with regards to advertising, would it be necessary to have the town approve what is said in the ad? Or?
I guess we'd like to see it.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you very much, Brandon.
Thank you. I think it's a good idea. So thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you. We'll talk soon. Thanks.
Okay, bye-bye. Okay, so we're back up to, although I do see one other resident, is there a specific?
Pool party, Paul.
Oh, pool party, okay. That'll be next. Number two on the list, the pool party waiver request from the Mountainside PTO. It's something that we've always done. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do it again unless somebody has a concern or a comment. Okay, so that should not be an issue, okay? All right, so the next thing is the gifts for the valedictorium and the salutatorium. That's standard as to what we've given out in past years. Do we have someone who has an eighth grader that's graduating that would like to hand those out?
Yeah, I have an eighth grader graduating. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, good, Steve. That's great. All right, so I guess we'll pass that, and then we'll get those over to Steve. Do we usually do it in April? Or are we doing it in May?
In June.
Are we trying to get ahead of the game?
We did it last year in June. I did it at the graduation.
Yes.
When we actually awarded them, when we passed the resolutions.
No, I drove it around because of COVID.
No, he's talking about before.
Us passing the resolution.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. All right, so, okay, that's fine. Memorial Day parade donation, I think that's, the whole parade is a little bit up in the air. I certainly think if we need the donation, we would, I don't think anyone has a problem with the Borough making the donation. I think we're having a meeting Monday night to talk about that some more, Deanna?
Yes, we are, and we could use that, because even if we don't have the parade, we're still going to have something for the veterans.
Okay, all right, so I don't think anybody really has a problem with that. We've been doing it in the past, so I think we need to do it again this year, okay? So I think we're up to number five. The, this is the authorization for Jill, the CFO, to accept bids for the $5,854,000 ban. Jill's the one that's always done it, so I don't see any reason why she wouldn't do it again. When are you gonna go out for those bids, Jill?
I think it's in the early 20s. I don't know the date exactly off the top of my head. It renews at the end of May. I mean, the end of April, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're gonna do it in April?
Well, I'm gonna accept the bids. I thought it was like the 20th, but I don't have my calendar in front of me to get the bids.
Okay. All right, so I don't think anyone has a problem with Jill accepting them. She's done it in the past. She always gets us a good deal, so I think that that'll be fine. So next, we have the Levi Quarry House bathroom project. I guess, Rachel, you're gonna fill us in on that a little, or?
Yes, I can. This is my request for mayor and council to consider. This bathroom project, the Levi Quarry House, currently does not have running water or powder room. And they would like to put this into the Levi Quarry House. Hopefully, the first floor, where all the sales go on and the shop is located, will be able to open up in the near future. The second floor is the children's museum. So I ask Glenn to please ask Mike Disco for a roundabout estimate of how much it would cost for both the water and sewer line to be run into the Levi Quarry House. And Glenn, I think I'm correct, you said around $15,000?
Yeah, approximately, yeah. That's a ballpark.
And we're gonna be doing that before the library is, the library parking lot is repaved, which is another year and a half out, I believe. Correct?
And the other thing is, most likely, the water and sewer would be hooked into the fire department, so we would go through that grassy area anyway.
Okay. So we would like to go ahead, and what I'm asking you all to consider is because fundraising has been so limited for them, they were only able to have one event, which was the fall plant sale. Normally, they have many events during the year. Could we consider helping them with a little bit of this $15,000 cost for the water and sewer line? Because at the end of the day, I think having a bathroom and running water, you know, does benefit the residents, the children, the people who want to shop, even from other towns who come and visit the Levi Quarry House.
Rachel, I think it's something to consider, but I talked to you before about this, and I don't know if you were able to look into it. Did they consider any grants?
I'm not sure if they've considered a grant for this. The most recent grant they just did receive was from the Watts Foundation, and it's for a different project. It is for the front porch, which needs redone, and they did receive $18,000 for the front porch. We do have our meeting tomorrow night, so if there are other grants or they're looking into it, I certainly will ask them, and I can get back to you on that.
Can I add something, if I may, please? The latest stimulus package, or whatever you want to call it, passed by the federal government, has set aside money for sewer and water projects. The Mountainside will be receiving an amount of money. The state of New Jersey has to promulgate the exact rules. They should be due within this month. I don't know if it'll be by the end of the month or sooner. They should be able to tell us what we would be able to spend the money allotted to Mountainside on. Hopefully, this project may fall under that as well.
I'm hoping it will too, but I think Matt would be able to help us understand if we need anything in town with that. Money is coming in. Um, money is coming in to hand. I mean, because I know I've been, I've contacted you, contacted you a couple of times about some sewers. Um, and basins. I don't know if that's something that we can utilize the monies for as well.
The ones you've recently contacted me about was all been, they've all been fixed. Um, the only, I mean, that we do do sewer things, um, regular yearly maintenance on certain areas of town. Um, the only other big thing I see which I think we might have budgeted for was the Possum Pass Creek that goes at the end of Charles Street. There's a big grate that's in that um, creek that blocks all the wood and sticks and leaves that come down. It's basically mangled. So I know I spoke to Mike Disco about this. Um, that needs to be repaired this year, no matter what. So I know he's budgeted for that. Maybe we could use some of that money towards that. Um, I would say that's probably anywhere from maybe five to ten grand at most, ten. Um, as any other major sewer things, I don't know any off the top of my head. I would have to um, speak with Mike about that. But I think if that money could go to that Levy, Levi Quarry House, I think it's a great idea.
So could matter, or, or Glenn, can you get back to me so I could relay information if it might be a possibility?
Yeah, as soon as the state uh, promulgates those rules, I'll, I'll distribute that to a mayor and council. Uh, because there will be other items that will, that we would be able to spend our, our money on as well. Uh, the largest being lost revenue from uh, certain uh,
Right.
items such as parking as well.
One, one of the reasons why we have delayed in introducing the budget is to see uh, what those funds are going to be used for and whether or not we can use them as part of our budget this year. Uh, uh, in order to be able to do that, there has to be some uh, and, and, and Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, there has to be some certainty that we're getting the funds and the promise of the federal government, you know, getting us the funds in a certain period of time, I don't think meets that uh, that standard. So we're, we're sort of waiting. Uh, I was on some uh, uh, conference calls in which the, the state is trying to work towards uh, getting those assurances so that we could actually use it uh, as part of our budget. The alternative is going to be that we may have to uh, amend the budget a, a, afterwards. Jill, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I haven't heard anything about that yet, but I, I do have to talk to Warren about something else. I could uh, ask him, the auditor as well, see if he's heard anything.
But it's a pretty broad uh, uh, grant that they're going to, to give us. So I'm, I'm fairly confident that uh, one of the specific things that they talked about was uh, water and sewer infrastructure. So the Levi Quarry House along with whatever other projects we already have budgeted for ma- may fall into that uh, the monies for that grant as well as uh, the lost revenue, which we were sort of kicking down the road a little bit because we were allowed to by the uh, the state. Uh, the alternative may be for us not to do that, to take the uh, the monies that we get to uh, 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 offset the, the loss of revenues in, in, in one budget year as opposed to spreading it out in five. But we haven't gotten that far yet, but I do believe there'll be enough money for, for uh, excuse me, for, for this project uh, out of the grant. One of the first things I thought of when when I, I started seeing what the grant was going to be for was I thought we could fit the uh, uh, the Levi Quarry House project into it. Actually Jill is the one that uh, had suggested that to me. So uh, I, I think it'll work out, Rachel. We don't have the money yet, but it's pretty broad.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I think the next thing is the uh, hiring of a street sweeper.
Can you give a little uh, background and then I'll, I'll pass it to Matt for a while. As, as you guys know, by our, by the stormwater regulations, we're supposed to streak, sweep the streets uh, at least once a year. Uh, it was in the budget for last year. Uh, and due to COVID, uh, was not acted upon. So uh, Matt will tell you about one quote that we do have. And then we're also meeting with Scotch Plains to try to uh, see if they can help us out. Uh, their administrator Al Mirabella has been very uh, accommodative and we're meeting with their DPW director Frank Nizzo on Monday. Uh, and Matt has a quote from a private company.
How about the county, Matt? I thought we had talked to Joe last year about it. And I know his, he thought his machines might have been too big to do our uh, our streets, especially like our cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, the, the county doesn't want to help us. We reached out to Kenilworth. We thought we had Kenilworth last year. Um, there's a new regime over there, so they don't want to help us. Um, I think Glenn said he reached out to Westfield. Um, they said no. I reached out to Springfield. They said no. So I guess our only hope is hopefully we can work out a deal with Scotch Plains. Or I got a quote here from TSS Sweepings at a union. Um, one sweep per year with the cost of nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And um, that does not include disposal. Um, the only way we could physically get rid of this stuff in mountainside without getting ourselves in trouble is to have dumpsters um, dropped off. So each, a dumpster is three hundred and twenty-five dollars to be dropped off. And then it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton after that. The problem I have with this is I have no idea how much we're going to be picking up. So I can't give you, I could tell you how much sweeping is going to cost, but I can't give you a number on tonnage. I mean, I could say twenty-five tons or I could, or mysteriously it could be fifty tons. I don't.
How about the company, Matt? Can they give you any ideas to what the tonnage?
I had a, I had a guy come out and drive the town with me. He couldn't give me an idea.
Yeah, how much do we have budgeted for it?
We, last year we budgeted twenty grand.
Same thing this year, Joe?
Yes.
So, I mean, the problem with dumping this stuff is according to the DEP, it, it's considered toxic waste. So it can't just be dumped in the pool parking lot like we jumped the wood chips. I mean, if they came down and saw that, this would cost us hundreds of thousands.
And then we'd have to get rid of it anyway, even if.
We'd have to get rid of it anyway. We'd have to get a machine from the county, find someone to come take it. Or with these dumpsters, I mean, I, I, I just don't know how much. I mean, when I was in Berkeley Heights, we had a mound of it the size of Borough Hall. But that was up there. I mean, they swept it every week. But I mean, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing. If we can work out a deal with Scotch Plains, I'm even willing to take one of my guys. You know, the sweeper goes around when it's full, they dump into one of our dump trucks. And we haul to Scotch Plains or wherever they dump it. And then we just come up with a number and say, all right, well, how much is it going to cost you to get rid of it? And then we'll just come up with a, a weight and say, all right, we'll pay you five grand to get rid of ours or whatever.
Matt, what is the DEP require? How many sweeps do we have to do a year? Is one going to meet their standards?
One on residential should, should, uh, I have to look it up. One should meet it. But really I think um, the commercial areas need to be swept once a month by stormwater regulations. So that's like Sheffield Street, Bristol Road, Glen um, Globe Avenue. I mean, you're not talking about many roads.
So do we get a separate, a separate estimate for them, Matt, or are they included in the nineteen to do the whole town?
They're included in the nineteen. I mean, if you did two sweeps a year, they, they drop it down the um, fifteen, almost sixteen thousand a sweep. So you're saving three grand.
Uh, but if we do one sweep at a whole town and then if we're maybe uh, get a price to just do the commercial area. So we can see how we can uh, fit that in.
Okay.
And then you gotta get some idea as to what the tonnage is going to be, Matt. I mean, I, I don't know what to tell you, but uh, maybe you can talk to other towns that have to get rid of it and what they put into a dumpster. You know, I, I, we gotta have at least some idea so we can figure out where we're going to get the money from, because it looks like the money that was budgeted, the entire amount's just going to go for one sweep.
Right. I mean, dump, I mean, you, you could be talking just five grand and that's five, that's thirty, thirty-two hundred and fifty dollars just for ten dumpsters. I mean, I think a hundred and thirty-seven roads, we might fill twenty dumpsters. Uh, I don't know. I gotta, I gotta figure it out. Let me, let me just work on it and speak with these. I asked these companies if they can give me an estimate. I'm like, what other towns do? And they couldn't. A lot of towns just dump it themselves. So, I mean, these sweepers come in, sweep and dump it into towns problem. But I'll, I'll, I'll speak with Springfield. I know they hold out. I'll see on an average what they get tonnage wise.
Uh, you gotta come up with an estimate till we know how to plan for it, Matt. Okay?
Right.
Thank you.
You didn't do this last year. Um, were there any consequences?
No, we haven't done it in a long time.
But it was required, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you don't do it, there's no consequences?
Well, not yet, but we, we've, we've been toying with it long enough. Plus we need to do it for the, the streets anyway. I mean, it's something that uh, uh, we, we have to do, uh, we should be doing to, to preserve the, the longevity of the streets. I mean, we haven't done it. I mean, you can drive around. You see that it uh, the place needs to be swept. So I, I think at a very minimum, this is the year that we might have to, to, we certainly have to do one sweep. So we need to figure out what the cost is going to be so we can figure out how to pay for it.
Yeah.
It's only a matter of time where there's going to be consequences. So we've been, just like our, well, I won't say it. Uh, yes, let's move on to the next one. Matt, give us an estimate uh, the best you can. Okay?
All right, no problem.
And, and, and you should also get that to the Public Works Committee and to Jill. Okay? Because they're going to have to take a look at this, I think, to make a recommendation. Okay?
Okay, no problem.
All right. Okay. So the approval of the municipal alliance bylaws and grant submissions. Okay, I guess Kim, that's why you're here to tell us about that.
Yes, um, so our last time that we updated our bylaws was in nineteen ninety-four. So I um, I was able to revise them and make them up to date. One of the things we needed to add at the end, I added a conflict of interest and that um, just describes if someone were to have a conflict and what that would look like. Um, so we need to just approve these bylaws and get them in place. Um, because the county really wants our bylaws updated.
Okay. So you can, can you forward those to John? John, can you, is John still on? Oh, there he is. John, can you take a look at those for us, please?
Sure.
Put your good housekeeping seal of approval on that because
Yeah.
I think that that would make a lot of sense. Anyone else have any questions specifically about the bylaws? Right. So John, you'll, you'll do a review and maybe you can send us a, a a quick memo as to they're, they're good, they're not good. This is the changes that have to be made. Uh, I'm assuming you'll be able to work with Kim and, and work out any uh, difficulties that you might have with the proposed bylaws.
Will do.
Where did you get these, Kim? From another, from another town, I hope?
Um, no, they actually would not share them. So the county gave me some guidelines to go by. Um, the conflict of interest I did get from another town um, about a year and a half ago. So uh, but no, I unfortunately, I wrote them based on our own bylaws. So John, if you, I can send you the prior ones to the current ones.
That will be helpful, Kim.
I did, while we're on the subject, uh, it appears that Kim is going to be uh, uh, elected as vice chairman of the the Community Development Revenue Sharing Full Committee. Uh, it's good. They, they're the ones that make decisions on some of these projects. So to have Kim in the, in the vice chair position, I think is, is both well for for mountainside and our ability to get awarded the uh, the projects that, that we need to uh, get awarded. So uh, congratulations, Kim. And I know you'll do a good job.
Thank you.
Okay. So department refunds. Who's doing this? Usually it's Frank because usually they're Franks.
There's two of them. There's one for recreation for a pool membership refund. And there's a second one for a uh, generator that was denied from the building department and they would like to um, receive a refund on that one for two hundred and fifty-two dollars. And the pool refund is just for um, going from a resident, a non-resident to a, now a senior member for them. So they're just looking for the credit.
Difference. Okay. All right. So um, next one is an update on the intern program. Glenn, I guess you're gonna.
Yes, that would be me. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, at a previous meeting, uh, the council was amenable to uh, hiring uh, two interns. We've decided that we would like to add one uh, intern upstairs that would be interested in building and construction. Uh, they would have a summer project to help us update our property records to make sure that they're all in um, compliance uh, and up to date. And then the, the next one would be a pool intern, somebody in, in, excuse me, interested in recreation. However, with an emphasis on marketing, not only the pool programs, but on recreation programs in general, that would be their project. In addition to uh, learning uh, day-to-day activities as well. Uh, with the council's permission, we'd like to create an advertisement and get that out there on our social media. Mountainside residents uh, would receive priority. The preference would be either a rising junior or rising senior in college.
What does rising mean and, and are we paying for either of these interns?
Uh, yeah, uh, both uh, would be paid as agreed upon before, suggested a salary would be fifteen dollars per hour. And rising means that they will be a junior next fall or a senior next fall.
Okay. I'm okay with this. I like this idea.
Okay. So anybody else have any comments about it? Okay. So the next is the, the status of the Viking property demolition. Matt, is that you?
Yes, um, so I received three quotes to demo, demo the building. Um, one, the cheapest being eighteen thousand nine hundred up to twenty-two thousand five hundred. Um, so I would like to move forward with obviously the lowest bidder on that one. Um, pending um, a pest control, uh, not a pest control, pending an asbestos test that was done on Friday of last week. Um, I should have that report back hopefully by the end of the week. If um, there's no asbestos in that basement in the floor tiles, then um, we should be ready to move forward with the demo of the house. There is a five hundred and fifty gallon oil tank on that property that prior to us buying it, we did do borings around this tank and came, the borings came back that this tank was not leaking. Um, we do have a permit on this tank that it was filled with sand back in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, I had three quotes on removing that oil tank. Um, I decided to go with a place in ERC environmental. Um, seven, uh, seventeen hundred and fifty dollars to remove the oil tank. Um, the permit should have been dropped off either today or tomorrow. And um, I don't want to get the oil tank out before we go to knock the house down. Um, prior to the house coming down, I will offer it up to the fire department for any training they would like to do. Um, and then uh, the house would come down. Um, the hole would be filled, graded back to where, what grade, right where it is now. Um, with um, we sell recycled concrete and dirt on top. As for the state property, um, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you saw the latest email from Mike Disco this afternoon. Um, he did speak with the DOT this evening and the, the DOT requested him, uh, that Mike send him the latest sketch on the um, the DOT property that we want to put the salt dome. Um, Mike said it sounded like it was very promising and that the DOT did not really have an issue with us expanding that area. Um, so as soon as they get the asbestos report back, I will advise everyone what that outcome is. And then uh, my request is to move forward as quick as possible to demo this house so we can get rolling here.
Okay. So anybody have a problem with it moving forward based upon, subject to that uh, the uh, uh, asbestos report? All right, Matt. So.
One more thing actually before we go. I have one quote so far. I was just waiting for the DOT to give us their final blessing before I really went at this. I have one quote. I have one quote to knock down, I think it's twenty-seven trees inside that wooded area. Most of them being very twiggy type things. And the first quote came in at thirteen grand. That includes cutting the trees and digging the stumps out with a machine, not grinding them with a stump grinder. These stumps need to be dug out complete and full so the salt dome does not fall off the side of a mountain. So I will get more quotes on that.
Do we need, we need three?
Yes, we need, yes, we will need three. And I could probably get you like five, but I'm, I'm going to offer it to some people that we usually use and then some bigger companies.
Okay, so anybody else have any questions, Matt, about moving forward with the Viking property? It's something we've wanted to do for a long time. So we got to get at it because we need to have the salt dome up and running by, by the fall, so, okay? So the next one is the COVID nineteen protocols. I know that, I believe Glenn had sent out some of the, the protocols in response to, I, I think it was Rachel and Deanna's request. So I don't know if anyone has had an opportunity to take a look at them.
I might get interject as you all may be aware, the state as of yesterday changed one of the protocols. If people are traveling domestically and they are fully vaccinated, they no longer have to quarantine upon their return to New Jersey.
So which one of these would that affect, Glenn?
Let me list that here. It, it has to do with our vacation time, not the exposure, or certainly not a positive test. But it is regarded to travel only.
Oh, yeah, I see that, okay.
And currently, we do have one borough employee and several officers that I believe are fully vaccinated, that they can come out of their quarantine for the one that is back, and for the others that are currently on vacation, they will not have to quarantine upon their return.
Good. Anybody else have any questions on these COVID policies? So what do we have to do? Put them in the manual, adopt them, Glenn? Well, what's the next?
No, because these are actually state of New Jersey policies.
Okay.
And since they're updated every day, I, I think it would kind of hurt us to make them borough policies because next week it could be something else, as, as this is very fluid.
Okay. All right, so I don't know, that's all I have on my list. Is there, I think there might even be one or two items that were added at the last minute, Glenn, that you want to? I know I have one.
Yes, Deanna was going to give us an update on the Local Government Week status.
Yes.
Thank you.
So right now, we have a few departments that still have to be filmed. But most of everything is done. Our week is the nineteenth through the twenty-third. We need to get, Matt needs to film everyone, probably hopefully before Tuesday of next week, so that he has time to edit and organize everything for us to enjoy the filming on our local channel, which will be staggered throughout the week. So each organization or depending on how Matt organizes it, will be able to enjoy something every single day, the nineteenth through the twenty-third on our local channel. I sent out an email to the people that have outstanding. If you can reach out to Matt and make arrangements with him, that would be helpful.
Deanna, did you also want to speak about the Rescue Squad, award winners? They will do a resolution to honor them as well.
I was prepared to do that next week. I will do that right now if you give me a second, if anybody else has anything to add until I find that.
Martha? Are we all set for me to host the gateway on the ninth?
I wasn't sure if you were, were you participating? I wasn't sure. That was like an email back and forth with Glenn.
So what is that, a virtual meeting?
It'd be a virtual meeting. I, I, did you respond, Mayor? I didn't see that.
No.
Maybe you didn't even mind I did. Get that, Glenn?
What's that?
You didn't get that?
Martha sent me an email, March nineteenth, that came on Easter Sunday, so I can't be a hundred percent sure lately.
Okay, so hosting it, just be sitting, it's going to be a Zoom, is that what it is?
I'll, yes, similar to when we would have them in the conference room.
Good.
Back in the live days.
I'm available if we need to do it, okay?
I'll contact them tomorrow.
So if I can continue with the Rescue Squad. This award is earned by demonstrating dedication to the squad providing excellent patient care and being a role model for other members. Twenty twenty was a unique year as we saw so many of our members step up and tackle the challenges of the pandemic head on, which made it difficult for us to choose one member. So congratulations to the following and the award they received. The Member of the Year is Dominico DeLuca and Aiden Heredy. Excuse me if I'm saying that incorrectly. The probationary member of the year is Megan Like and Lila McMill. These are, they will be awarded at our public meeting as well, and we were going, we're going to invite them to be part of it. I would also like to thank everyone for participating in the Borough Plastic Bag Collection. We did get five hundred pounds, which gives us a bench, which we are going to find a spot for it near our pool. Thank you.
Can I add one more thing to the plastic bags?
Sure.
I probably have fifty pounds upstairs that I will weigh this week, and I will let either Rachel, I will let you know how much they weigh, and I will deliver those to Stop and Shop for you because I had a, I was over my five hundred and we still had more coming. You could just add those to.
Thank you, Matt. I'll add them to the, I was going to announce that about the Restoration Committee. Now we're continuing to go forward. There is still a bag at Borough Hall, and there's one on the Levi Quarry porch. And we just put out today on the Facebook the announcement about that. So the program is continuing. For those who want to donate their bags, please do continue to drop them off. The Restoration Committee would greatly appreciate that. So thank you.
Okay, so at this point, we have bills and claims.
Be resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Mountainside that the following bills are the person's name and for the amount stated below have been duly audited and found to be correct this sixth day of April two thousand twenty-one. The same be paid after council's review if and when funds are available, and that the mayor, council president, administrator, and treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to sign and deliver warrants for same, and the amount is for fifty-eight thousand fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay, we got a motion, we have a second to pay the bill.
Second.
Okay, poll the council, Martha.
Councilwoman Andre?
Yes.
Councilman Dirkis?
Yes.
Councilman Matajack?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pacifico?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peter?
Yes.
Okay, so just a couple reminders. The invocation, the next meeting is April twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. The invocation is Councilman Messler. We're going to do a proclamation for Arbor Day. We're also going to be introducing the two thousand twenty-one budget. Jill, if you could call me tomorrow, I'd like to talk to you about that.
Yes.
Okay. So does anybody else have any other council comments?
I do, I have one other one there. Also from the Mountainside Restoration Committee, they will be hosting their spring geranium and plant sale. This will be held out front of the Hetfield House Thursday, April twenty-ninth through Sunday, May second, from nine AM to four PM while supplies last. So please come by for their spring plant and geranium sale.
Any other council comments? I have one comment I'd like to make. I'd like to thank Deanna and Rachel for submitting us, for submitting Mountainside to the New Jersey League of Municipalities Show Off Your City Contest. As a result of their hard work, we were, we were given an honorable mention in recognition for the two thousand twenty-one Show Off Your City Contest. So I want to thank them for their efforts. Just one other accolade for Mountainside that we deserve. So thank you, ladies.
You're welcome. Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, so at this point, is there anyone left in the audience for participation?
No, I do not see anyone lined up. And we are also on a twenty-five second delay.
Hey, seeing and hearing no public participation, I move that section to be closed.
Okay, so that's closed. We're going to be go into exec. Hopefully, it will be a short exec for, for one item. And now that I have approximately ten of these notices at my house, I'd be glad to, to read it. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey permits the public to be excluded from certain matters to be discussed by the governing body. Whereas the mayor and council desire to discuss personnel, which are matters where the exclusion of the public is permitted. Whereas public disclosure of the results of this discussion will be made as soon as the matter discussed, have matters discussed have been resolved by the governing body of the borough of Mountainside. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Mountainside that the aforesaid matters shall be discussed in closed session upon adoption of this resolution. And as I said, it'll be personnel, so I need a motion to go into exec.
So moved.
Okay, so we're going to go to exec as soon as we can all log on to exec.